We are all here. Welcome, everyone. Before we call this meeting to order, I would like us all to observe a minute's silence to honor the memory of Dr. Frank Wells, who passed away a year ago. Thank you. So, we are now going to call to order this regular meeting of the Albany Unified School District Board of Education. Today is Tuesday, March 11th, and it is 7:04 PM. Could we please have a roll call to establish a call? Student trustee Shepard?
Here.
Student trustee Devdor?
Here.
Trustee Inklis?
Here.
Trustee Khan?
Here.
And trustee Davidson is joining on Zoom?
I'm here, thank you.
Vice President Mahoney?
Here.
President Hopwood?
Here.
And superintendent Stone?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. We're now moving on to item two, which is our pledge of allegiance, which Vice President Mahoney will lead.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to our fellow people who stand for my nation under God, indivisible, with the name of the King Jesus Christ.
Thank you. And now, item three, we have our student board members reading the AUSD mission and vision statement and the meeting norms.
The mission of Albany Unified School District is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens. AUSD is committed to creating comprehensive learning opportunities in a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment addressing the individual needs of each student.
Meeting norms. Maintain a focus on what is best for our students. Ensure a safe environment for all views to be expressed, treating each other, staff, and the public respectfully. Endeavor to find common solutions to issues through collaboration without sacrificing one's beliefs and what is best for the students. Make a commitment to effective deliberation, each one listening with an open mind while others are allowed to express their own points of view, even if one disagrees.
Thank you so much. And now, moving on to item four, which is report of action taken in closed session. The board took no action in closed session today. And item five is the approval of our agenda. Now, we are going to do things a little bit differently today with voting because trustee Davidson is here remotely, and so we need to do a roll call vote for each action item. So, if we have anybody who wants to pull anything or discuss anything on the agenda, if you could let us know, we want to just try and do one vote for the whole agenda if possible. So, does anybody have anything they want to change or pull? No? Okay. So, the only change I want to make is to table the second part of item 11G, as that bond report is not ready. So, that piece is on measures B and E, financial and performance audit reports. We're doing the first part of 11G, which is the 2324 AUSD annual financial audit report. So, we're just tabling that second part. So, anyone want to move to approve the agenda with that 11G change?
I move to approve the agenda with tabling the second part of 11G.
Second. So, are we gonna have a roll call now? Student trustee Shepard?
Yes.
Student trustee Devdor?
Yes.
Trustee Inklis?
Yes.
Trustee Khan?
Yes.
And for the records, trustee Khan is here. I didn't call your name during roll call, I'm sorry.
Oh, I did say yes.
Did I?
I did say yes.
Okay, sorry. I'm drawing a blank now. Trustee Davidson?
Yes. And I think I'm supposed to disclose that there's no one over 18 in the room with me when I vote on things.
Thank you for that reminder. Vice President Mahoney?
Yes.
President Hopwood? Yes. And the agenda passes. And so, now we're moving on to item six, which is public comment for matters not on the agenda. If you're here in person and want to make public comment, you could approach the podium. Seeing no one, is there anybody in our virtual audience who wants to make public comment? I can see some raised hands, so I am just gonna go right ahead. The first one. Okay, go ahead.
Hello, school board. As documented in a letter to the school board recently, the school district has unfortunately, one, refused to publicize a planned training on antisemitism, two, canceled a Holocaust speaker scheduled to talk to high school students, and three, promoted an event led by an anti-Zionist speaker and organization that promotes Hamas, which is a terrorist organization. These actions and double standards have hurt many valuable members of the Albany school community, including Jews, Israelis, and many others. Just as Arab and Muslim are not bad words, Zionism is not a bad word either. AUSD students and the wider community should not be getting the message from district staff that it is. The double standard demonstrated and described in the letter is doing just this. What the community needs is a school district led by our superintendent to clearly and consistently communicate and enforce the district's policies, rules, and precedents set. Setting clear expectations and following through with the rules in place consistent with Civil Rights Act is essential to fostering a safe community and a learning environment. It will help keep hate off our campuses and the focus on student learning, achievement, and well-being. As chronicled in the book Accountable, this is a major lesson to be learned by AUSD from the past. The late superintendent Frank Wells understood this, and I hope the current superintendent and staff do as well. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your comment. And now, next person in our virtual audience, go ahead.
Hi there. I wanted to make a comment or actually ask a question, and I understand that the board is not able to answer during a public comment, because this is not an item on the agenda officially, but if you could consider it for a future item on the agenda to educate the community about the potential impact, especially budget impacts, of the Department of Education, one, being officially greatly reduced, and, two, what would happen if it is fully dissolved in terms of the budget for AUSD and how the AUSD executive team and the board forecast that that could affect its ability to educate students and continue to have all the programs that it offers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And seeing no others, we are now going to move on to item seven on our agenda, which is approval of the consent calendar. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments about the consent calendar before we move to approve it? Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
All second. And now, we'll do a roll call, and again, with Vonnie needing to disclose whether she has anyone there, 18 or over, and if so, what the relationship is. Student trustee Shepard?
Yes.
Student trustee Devdor?
Yes.
Trustee Khan?
Yes.
Trustee Davidson?
There is no one else in the room, and I vote yes.
Vice President Mahoney?
Yep.
President Hopwood?
Yes.
And trustee Inklis?
Yes.
So, the consent calendar passes unanimously. And now, we are moving on to item eight, which is review and action, and it's our employment contract for the chief business official of AUSD.
Good evening, president. President Hopwood, is it working? And trustees, I'm very pleased to be able to introduce to you Linda Wu, who we are excited to share, has been chosen by our community, by our interview panel, as our new chief business officer. A little bit about Linda Wu. She's a highly experienced and dedicated financial leader with over 20 years of progressive experience in financial management and business operations. She's coming to us from Lighthouse Community Public Schools in Oakland as senior director of finance, where she led all aspects of finance and business operations. She has extensive experience managing millions of dollars of funding and overseeing budget, payroll, procurement, and financial strategy. She's held multiple key roles in other organizations such as Oakland Unified School District and UC San Francisco. And again, her expertise is really, and her understanding of facilities and risk management and operational efficiency is going to be a huge benefit to our school district. She's deeply committed to fostering strong relationships across all levels of the organization, and brings a very collaborative and strategic mindset to her work. So, again, I'm very excited to introduce her to our board tonight, and we look forward to learning from her and spending time with her and getting to know her. And I'm wondering if you would like to come up to the podium and just say a quick hello?
Why don't we just go ahead and first do your business?
Yes, that's probably a good idea.
Then we would love to welcome Ms. Wu. So, can I get a motion, please, to approve this employment contract?
I move to approve the employment contract for the CBO official at AUSD.
Second. And then a roll call, please, with Vonnie making the usual disclaimer? Student trustee Shepard?
Yes.
Student trustee Devdor?
Yes.
Trustee Davidson?
There's no one here except me, and yes.
Okay. Vice President Mahoney?
Yes.
President Hopwood?
Yes.
Trustee Inklis?
Yes.
Trustee Khan?
Yes.
Great. So, that passes unanimously. Yay! And welcome, and would love to hear it from you.
Thank you, first and foremost, for the warm welcome and to Sarah. I am truly grateful for this opportunity. Again, as mentioned, my name is Linda Wu, and I've spent over 20 years of my career, basically, you know, adding to education administration in multiple capacities of business, finance, and so forth, but I don't wanna bore you with my resume, but truthfully, my passion on maintaining my career in education is really because I didn't come from a background with a lot of means, and I felt like education was my pathway to actually to be able to do that. And then, having the opportunity to, number one, analyze AUSD's finances, and then also having a chance to meet many of the school members here already, I am very, very pleased and hopeful and very optimistic about this opportunity that you've given to me, and truly grateful for that.
Thank you so much, and we look forward to meeting you properly at some point soon.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Great. So, we are now moving on to item nine, which is our student board member report, and student board member Ayush Deera will do his presentation. Thank you.
Cool. Good evening, Superintendent Stone, President Hopwood, Vice President Mahoney, and Board of Trustees. Thank you for your time tonight, and today I'm addressing a pretty heavy topic, but also one that I believe is very important to discuss, which is active shooter safety and preparedness. My purpose for this is, when I was interviewed for the student board member position, one of my main focuses was about safe school environment and steps for better active shooter preparation on campus. And as a passion project, I said that I was selected, I would try to make a difference in this area. And pretty much in this presentation, I'm just gonna outline the steps that we can take to make our campus safer, and also discuss the solutions that are already being worked towards with Principal McNally and Superintendent Stone. Let me start by talking about some design flaws on campus that could potentially leave students and staff vulnerable during an active shooter situation. First of all, some classroom doors can only be locked from the outside at the high school campus, which may leave students unsure if their doors are secure during a lockdown. This was a key issue in the Uvalde active shooter incident, where doors that couldn't be locked internally exposed students and staff to the threat. To my knowledge, there are a few doors on the third floor that had this issue, but I didn't look at all the doors in the school, so there might be more. It's pretty much just a pushbar design, where you can open the door from the outside, but then, once you're inside the classroom, there's no button lock or like turn knob to ensure that it's actually locked from the inside. So, really, the teacher doesn't have any way of knowing if it's even locked, besides opening the door. And the solution, in my opinion, is retrofitting all the doors. I don't think there's that many, but the ones that do have that issue should be retrofitted so that they can be locked quickly from the inside, and there's a way, like a push button or a switch, knowing 100% if the door is locked. Another major design flaw at the high school is the bathroom doors, which are chained open on the second floor, and this was done to prevent vaping in the bathrooms, so that the school security could look into the bathrooms and see if that's happening. But it also poses a safety risk, because in a lockdown situation, a bathroom might be considered a safe haven, which a student needs to hide in, and they need a way to secure it to seek refuge. So, my solution for this is retrofit the bathrooms to be similar to the ones in the gender-neutral bathroom in the C building, and that bathroom is actually really well-designed, because the door is left open at all times, and I've never seen a problem where somebody is closing it and locking themselves inside. And it also has a little window outside, where school campus security can look through to see if the vaping issue is happening. So, I think if all the bathrooms were made like similar to the C building bathrooms, where there's a way to keep the door open and also have a window for the campus security to look inside, I think that would be a really good design update for all the bathrooms. Next is focusing on revamping the active shooter drills and assemblies to better prepare students and staff for all the possible scenarios. To my knowledge, it has been years since I last participated in an active shooter preparedness assembly, and I'm pretty sure it was in middle school, and I'm a senior in high school now. And since then, I believe that the government-recommended response strategies have actually changed from what used to be just a lockdown drill and try to seek shelter in the nearest classroom, it has now changed to the run, fight, hide, which I'm sure a lot of my students and peers don't know, and I didn't know about until I actually started researching for this. Also, our drills mainly focus on lockdown procedures and drills when students are in classrooms, but don't really talk about other areas of the campus, like the baseball field, the tennis courts, and other like sports stuff outside of the campus. And most people, if the situation actually happened, they would most likely run off campus, but I do think it's important to brief the students on what they actually should do, like a recommendation to get to a safe space from each location. Additionally, students with injuries or disabilities that prevent them from moving quickly need special attention, and they should have specific briefings on what to do and dedicated safe spots on campus that are easily accessible and secure. And to my knowledge, there are students at Albany High School who have mobility disabilities, so it is important to address that and find a safe spot for them to go in this situation. So, for the assemblies, I believe there should be at least once a year. That would provide information on like the updated safety protocols and what students should do during all the different emergency situations. It would also introduce students to the updated drills, so everyone knows exactly how to respond. I know a big problem with the assemblies is that it's hard to deliver them, because it's a sensitive topic, and it might be like trauma-inducing, but I do think it's necessary to find a way to present it in a way that students are feeling comfortable, like once a year, so that every new incoming class has that same briefing done. The last point is the cellphone area, and I'll start by saying that I know it's a government-mandated policy, so it's very hard to like intervene with that, but, and I do support the cellphone policy being used in the classroom, like putting your phone in a box or like putting it in like these little like phone holders that they have, but there's a policy at Albany High School where if your phone is caught, if you're caught using your phone during class three times, they must turn it into the office every morning, which leaves them without their phone for the whole day, and not just that period. So, this policy, I do agree, might help reduce distractions during the class, but it also might pose a safety risk, and the safety risk is that while in an active shooter situation, I feel like phones are very important to contact family, friends, emergency responders, and removing the phones can like leave the students without this lifeline. So, there should be a balance. I feel like teachers can have students turn in their phones at the beginning of class, but I don't think they should be the whole day or the whole week without them, so I feel like an update in that part of the policy should do the trick there. So, like I said, we already started discussing some solutions with Dr. Shin, Principal McNally, and Superintendent Stone, and Albany High School has already started working on renovating the doors. I think Mr. McNally has sent out an email that will get that started. And then, also, he had a plan to make the bathrooms more like the C building ones, so that's already really good solutions for the designs. And we also discussed reviewing and updating the cellphone policy, which is a little bit harder to do, but Mr. McNally said he can move towards making a few updates, and then we can see what happens after that. And we also discussed improving camera coverage at Albany High School, because there are some blind spots that need to be addressed. So, to conclude, I strongly believe that taking action on the points that I discussed can make our campus a safer place, and I know I only talked about Albany High School here, because I did the research only on Albany High, but it's important to say that these steps should apply to all Albany campuses, especially with the designs and assemblies, because I think that's really important for all campuses. And that concludes my presentation. Does anyone have any questions? Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you so much and I appreciate you doing that. I know this was something that you felt really passionate about, so I'm grateful to have the opportunity for you to do this before you graduate. Anybody on the board, I can see a raised hand from Trustee Davidson, but anybody who's here on the board have any questions or comments?
Not really a comment, but just great to see your presentation and also like having sat on the panel that interviewed you. It's been great to see some of the things that you suggested already being implemented and the fact that like you were able to bring that student voice and the importance of why this is needed. And also thank you to Mr. Jeffy for actually, you know, implementing some of those changes and working with the team. So it's just wonderful to see it's actually happening in real time.
And of course, our technology, the cell phone policy, we're definitely going to be fleshing that out at some point soon, so we can bear all of those points in mind. So thank you for those. Anybody else on the board here?
Yeah, I mean, once again, thank you so much for pulling this together and I'd echo what President, the President, sorry, Becky. One of those days. But with the cell phone policy, I know we've got some work we need to do as a district to kind of revisit that and this is great input for that as we move forward. I also know we're waiting on some of the state coming back with some of the details on AB 1858, which is the state legislation on active shooter drills and what is what is quote unquote age appropriate. I believe that's supposed to be coming in June and so I think that can be a great guide for us as we start to think about, you know, what does this now look at the high school, which obviously looks really different than what it might look at at middle schools or elementary schools. But you know, highlighting this is obviously critical. So thank you so much. Apologies for having a brain.
It's happening today, isn't it, the last name thing? And then go ahead, Trustee Davidson.
Thank you. So I have a couple of different thoughts on this. One is, thank you so much, Student Trustee Deodar. I remember hearing you talk about this early on and I'm just so glad to see it all the way coming through. A couple of other things that I just wanted to bring up. One, Superintendent Stone, I'm wondering, are our staff, like do we have staff at each school site trained in, I know there's one that we've, I've recently received some training in Alice and it's quite a quite a good program. And then one of the school sites that I'm working at, we have an all call on our phones and that's what we go to when we want to get word out that something's going on and it just like takes a lot of the steps out of the process. So it's just kind of a button that can be hit. And then another thing I just want to bring up, if I know we want students to have access to their cell phones, but in a moment like this, there is an importance in us reminding the community that the school should be doing everything we can to make that the safest place for students to be. I understand it's really scary to think about someone coming in there or something coming in there, but if we have all of our students then getting on their cell phones, we do run the risk of jamming our airways and not being able to get important messages in and out. And so I think as we consider that, we want to be thoughtful about having them have access to that, but also how do we get messaging out kind of the most quickly as a district? And so those are kind of my thoughts. And then just in the interim, I think there are like temporary door lock devices that we can get on those doors really quickly before we have, if we need time to retrofit or do anything like that.
Cool, thank you.
And I can respond that we do have staff training on emergency protocols and procedures, but as trustee and Vice President Mahoney mentioned, there's going to be some shifts in terms of guidance around active shooter trainings. One thing I can mention now is that it's important that those are trauma informed and that they don't create a high intensity environment for students. And so just in terms of newest best training, I can say that we do not have that yet and that is something that we're moving towards and we're actively looking into that right now.
Can I just add one more thing? I know we've talked about the cell phone policy at the high school, but I do think it's something that would need to be looked at the middle and even elementary. I know that sounds shocking, but it's always odd to hear my kiddo come home and talk about the cell phone and what they're watching and what's going on at school at that age already. So something to consider as well.
That is our plan. Thank you. Any more questions or comments for our student board member? Thank you so much, that was great. So now we have item 10, staff reports handing over to Superintendent Stone for this one.
Technical difficulties, okay. Once again, good evening, President Hopwood and trustees. Tonight I am going to present an update on some of the things that we have been doing in the school district in order to foster a safe and inclusive school environment. As we know, our AUSD mission is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens and be, we are committed to creating comprehensive learning opportunities in a safe, supportive and collaborative environment, addressing the individual needs of each student. Tonight, we'll talk about how safety impacts learning, identify how facilities assessments and support safety inform and support safety improvements. We're going to review, reflect on some of our top safety priorities and facilities priorities and provide an overview of ongoing projects and improvements in our safety measures, as well as share some plans for the future actions to enhance school safety and align with district goals and really in response to some of the the information that was just shared in our student board report. So once again, our current strategic plan objectives, which are aligned with our mission, are to assess and increase academic success, support the whole child and communicate and lead together. For us to be able to reach those priorities, it's important that we understand that in order for the brain to learn, and I've brought this up in several different times and places since I've been here, it's important that the brain feels safe. Neuroreception refers to the brain's continuous scanning for safety cues in people and environments. And when the brain perceives any kind of threat, it's in, it's, it becomes almost impossible for the brain to do any kind of learning. And so it's really, really important that we are focusing on safety first before we are able to actually get to the academic parts of the day. So just a reminder of a timeline, back in 2013-14, the district developed a facilities master plan. In 2223, Dr. Wells created a safety task force that convened to gain different perspectives on safety in the school sites. In 2023, the district contracted with an outside agency to conduct a district safety audit. And in May of 2024, a facilities needs assessment was conducted. In 2023, the safety audit really brought up four areas for focus. Physical safety measures, some of them were addressed in our student trustees' presentation. Securing entry points, improved surveillance, meaning cameras for safer campuses and improved lighting, outside lighting. Well-being initiatives, just in terms of supporting mental, social, emotional health for our students and helping them to create stronger peer connections. Health and allergy protocols, it was called upon us to review our safety equipment and train staff on health protocols and also come up with an allergy management, a consistent, coherent allergy management policy across all schools. And traffic safety was also called out. We're really working together collaboratively with the city to push for improved traffic controls, more bike lanes and I would, I would include here maybe some improved safety measures on our streets outside of our schools. Some of these things have started or have been completed. I'm not going to read the entire list, but we've definitely made some strides and then tonight we're going to be, after this, asking to move forward with some of the camera upgrades. Some things to note that we still need based on this, we might want to consider thinking about having a buzzer system in schools like Marin and other, we have possibly some other schools that could, that could use that. We definitely want to look at just overall our access to campuses and make sure that, you know, we've really done everything we can within the parameters that make sense, not only for safety of the campus and people coming onto campus, but also the ability to get off of campus, which I think was just named in the previous presentation. We also have though improved some of the areas. I want to just note that the health and allergy protocols have definitely been updated. We have AEDs at all sites, staff are trained on Narcan and we also have that at all sites and we do have a standardized allergy protocol specifically around nuts. Another thing I would say that we really want to keep moving forward with is working collaboratively with the city to ensure that traffic safety is improved around our school So in 2024, there was a facilities report and some of the things that came out of that facilities report really were in connection to some of the safety concerns. We want improved accessibility, specifically restrooms being more accessible and just thinking about concrete and other, other areas around the school to, to make sure that, I will just note where the, the fire lane between Cornell and the district office, there's some concrete lifting there that poses a safety threat. So there are things that we still need to work on, but we want to make sure that accessibility is smooth. Again, this goes for the safety, but also the social and emotional health of our kids. Security cameras, which is on the agenda for tonight. HVAC replacement, which has been, I would say 100% completed. And we talked a little bit tonight about cell phone usage, but we also want to think about other technology and how are we using that safely and what does that mean for our student learning? And so we are going to be convening a technology planning committee. Electrification, I do want to note that there was a request at some point to do a solar conversion, but two years ago, a feasibility study was conducted and the board at that time rejected the plan. So currently, we aren't focusing on a full-scale electrification of the district. Modernization also came up as a priority and some of these things have started and others have not yet. And part of the reason for that is that we were very fortunate to pass a bond in November. And one of the things that we need to do in relationship to this bond is go back to looking at an updated facilities master plan. Some of these modernization priorities might shift based on whatever our facilities master plan ends up becoming. And so we are also going to be convening a voluntary facilities master planning committee. Little snapshot of school safety, so this is just a tiny snapshot between May of 2024 and November of 2024. Why just this period of time, you might ask? Because one thing I will say is that we need to actually improve our reporting of some of these things. And this was, I think, a significant amount of time where we noticed that there was some great reporting. So in this snapshot of time, this is what we can say was reported by the schools. There are things that are less significant, I would say vandalism, depends on the type of vandalism, of course. An active nature is significant, but not something we can really do much about. But then there are things that are considered more significant in terms of safety. So some of the incidents that have been reported in this period of time are elopement and that does not mean people going and getting married. That means students leaving a part of the school where they're supposed to be, where they're supervised and going to another area where they're unsupervised. Injury, acts, threatening acts towards one another and altercations. So you can see in this period of time where we see the most action, I would say. And another way that we're checking in on our safety is again, our social and emotional health of our kiddos. And so we conduct the school climate, we, the California Healthy Kids Survey throughout the years and this is a snapshot of spring of 2024. Basically, the Healthy Kids Survey asks kids questions about how they're feeling about school and how they're feeling about their experiences. And you can see that this is what students reported at that time. I wanted to make sure that people are aware of the number of kids that were asked the question in this period of time. So fifth graders, we had 258 fifth graders at the time, seventh grade 264, ninth 259, 11th 256. So ninth and 11th together was 515 students. So again, you can see where students are feeling good about school and where they're feeling less good. And one of the things that we're looking at is facilities upkeep and specifically cleanliness and tidiness. Now I will say that in my conversations with students, it has come up that often they come into the schools in the morning and they're quite clean and then by the end of the day, they're not. So that is also something that I've actually spoken to our student trustees about, how can we help our students also understand their role in facilities upkeep? And I've also spoken to our custodians who would very much appreciate the support of the students in keeping the schools as clean as possible. That said, we obviously can do better in terms of making sure that we're keeping things up. One thing about being, feeling safe at a school or feeling safe in your community is when you see things that look beautiful and you walk into a tidy area, that also sets your mind at ease and helps with safety. So actually having a clean, beautiful campus helps with learning. So some recommendations that we'd like to consider, we definitely want to think about unauthorized access to our schools and we want to think about how we can safely and productively secure entry points. We want to install and maintain security cameras in key areas and specifically starting with our middle school and high school. Given the incident reports that we shared before, those seem like the most important places. And I would like before we move forward with looking at our elementary schools, that we have a really solid facilities and technology plan so we can make sure that that is the right fit for an elementary school and whatever we do there. We want to make sure that we're implementing visitor management systems with check-in protocols, increase supervision in those high traffic areas, conduct regular safety drills, which also include active shooter drills that are, as AB 1858 points out, trauma informed. We want to improve, continue to improve lighting around campus and enhance visibility and ensure that all of our emergency exits are clearly marked and accessible. And I just want to add, one of the things too, is that our doors, we know that when they get closed, that they're locked from the outside, but they're, they're easily, easy to open if people need to move out of the rooms. Emotional safety, we want to continue to foster inclusive school cultures that celebrate diversity and belonging, implement peer mentorship or continue some peer mentorship that started and buddy systems to support all of our new students that are coming into our community as well as any students that are struggling in any kind of way. Provide staff with training in trauma-informed and restorative practices. Increase Provide staff with training in trauma-informed and restorative practices, increase access to school counselors, mental health, professional and social emotional learning, encourage student-led initiatives that promote kindness, inclusion, and conflict resolution, strengthen anti-bullying policies and intervention strategies, and provide guidance for our families on safe internet practices at home. Emergency preparedness, we want to make sure that we have a very clear crisis response protocol and that everyone is trained in that, including our students, as well as our staff. Partner with local law enforcement and emergency services for coordinated safety efforts, which we do, but will continue to do that. Equip classrooms with all emergency supplies, making sure that they're up to date. Again, this is something we do, but will continue to do that. Continue to conduct safety routine, safety audits, and identify and address any potential risks that come up. And as Trustee Davidson mentioned, implement digital alert systems for immediate communication and emergencies. We also want to make sure that we're being safe online. And again, we're going to be convening a technology committee to look at some of this, but we want to make sure that we are educating students on digital citizenship and online safety at school, and also helping families at home understand some of these important lessons. We want to implement strong cybersecurity measures to protect student and staff data. We do have those already, but we also want to just continue to check them and make sure that they're up to date and really doing what they're meant to do. And we want to monitor and address online bullying and threats. We already do this. It's a little challenging because there's some purview that we have and some that we don't, but again, this is really a collaboration with our families and with our students to really minimize that online activity. So again, I just want to, first of all, appreciate our Albany community for passing Measure L and for ensuring that we actually have money to do some very, very much-needed improvements to our facilities. I'm not going to read through all of this, but thank you. This is some of the language that was in the Measure L fact sheet. And what I wanted to just note here is that most of this was really thinking about some of the things that came up in those safety audits and those facility audits, and there may be some other things that we haven't thought of that we might want to consider. And so I also appreciate there's some openness in this bond that allows our facilities master plan to really become as robust as it can be. So that is what comes next. We really do need to create a facilities master plan. We are going to start meeting, I believe, this month, or we're trying to get our first meeting up and running for this month. We've had teachers and staff already sign up who want to be on it, and we're going to be working to have community involved as well. And some other next steps that are important, our citizens' bond oversight committee is convening, again, in March, I believe, next week? Next week? Faciliters, as I said, facilities master planning committee will be taking applications from our community. As I said, we've already had staff identify who are interested in being on that, similar with technology master planning committee. We are going to be planning active shooter trainings that are trauma-informed and not high intensity. And again, we are looking for some guidance on this, but I think that we will work proactively on that. And again, we'll be convening our facilities master planning team and our technology master planning, sorry, in April will be the first meetings. And as soon as we have a plan from our technology master planning committee, I will be sharing a board report around technology safety and what we've come up with that, and that, I'm hoping, will be in May. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. It's good to see what is coming. Anybody on the board have questions or comments? And anybody in our audience, either in person or online, have any questions or comments? I am not seeing anyone, so thank you so much. And we are now going to move on to our review and action section, beginning with item 11A, the independent contractor services agreement between AUSD and Guidepost Solutions for Security Camera Systems Upgrade Consultation and Design Services at Secondary Schools. Mouthful and welcoming Director Jaffe.
Thank you, Superintendent Stone, trustees. I cannot think of a better introduction to my item than what we've just been hearing here tonight. And before I jump in, I just want to say how buoyed I am that the district is being so thoughtful about identifying these areas for improvement and also the progress that we've made to this point as we chip away at these needs. And this one tonight is sort of a first step towards our security camera improvement, which has been identified in a number of these committees and reports. And what we're moving forward, what we'd like to move forward with here is to contract with a consultant to help us develop our RFP for that upgrade at the high school and middle school primarily, which have been identified as our most needed sites. The current system is not adequate. There is a lot of technology that has happened over the last few years. Cameras are much smarter. AI now does a lot of the work that people used to have to do. And that, bringing that high level of technology and expertise to this project is going to benefit us getting the best system we can for our dollar. Because this is expected to be over the $220,000 threshold, we will need to do formal bidding. To do formal bidding, we need to have a highly developed scope of work, a plan that the contractor can respond to. And Guidepost is an excellent organization who has done a lot of work in this field, and I'm recommending that we bring them on board to first do some discovery at each of the sites, interviewing key stakeholders, evaluating the current conditions, and then developing a plan that we can build into an RFP. And that's basically the item tonight.
Thank you. Anybody here on the board have any questions or comments? Student board members, anything? I was going to do board first, and then I'm going to look at this. Yeah. Anybody sitting here have any questions or comments for Director Jaffe? And I can see that Trustee Davidson does so. Go ahead.
Okay. So I just want to be really clear. So this item tonight is $35,000, just to have them come in and do the discovery, and then we're going to develop an over $220,000 plan that they're going to help us with.
Yes, they'll help us write the RFP that we can then go to bid on.
I guess my, so we have this new bond. We've been kind of like trying to figure out the steps on that, and we, I'm just wondering, is this the right time and method to do this? Or are there other things that maybe we're putting in place as a district and a board that would do this, like, that could do this work? And then that $35,000 could go towards something else? Or do we feel like this is an absolute necessity?
I think it's been presented as a high priority, and I don't think we have the expertise in-house and staff to develop this on our own because of the technology and the expertise needed.
We definitely don't right now. I agree with that. I'm just wondering if we, I'm literally being called by Albany Police because our brewery was broken into this morning and we used our footage. And so I'm like 100% on board that I think that this is fantastic and we need to do it. I'm just like, to pay $35,000 to then do the rest of it. Is that what we should do absolutely right now? Or are we developing anything else as a school district that would do this job? And I guess it's kind of hard for me to ask that question because we haven't put all of those things out for discussion yet.
Yeah. If I could answer that, I think the concern I have, if we wait, is that we might wait too long. And this has been made very clear to me by our site leaders, by our campus supervisors, and I would say, just in general, as best practice, that our middle school and our high school do need the upgrade to cameras as soon as possible. And I would be concerned if we wait too long through our facilities master plan committee to make a decision about this. I've definitely thought both sides could be true, but I think that this is enough of a situation that warrants us moving forward with the middle school and high school now. And I do understand it's a significant amount of money, and I think it's going to be, in the long run, worth it.
I mean, my perception is that, sorry. My perception is that high school and the middle school, this feels a little bit like no regrets. In other words, this is work we're going to probably do regardless. As I think about the facilities master plan, I'm sure there are other places we're going to have to, we're going to run into conflict between, we're likely spending money here, but we might be making big changes. How do we think about that? In my mind, you know, the high school is in relatively, is in relatively good shape compared to some of our facilities. And, you know, for the middle school, not that there aren't places for improvement, but, and this seems like something that has been on our list for a while. So that's at least where my head is, is I sort of think about this. And yeah, I don't want to spend lots of money on these things, but we need to, like, we don't have the skill set in-house, and I do think it's important enough for us to go after. At least that's how I'm currently thinking about it.
And I just wanted to add, in terms of the timing, we can get this work done now and then release the RFP at any point. If, this is going to take a minimum of 60 days to get this process finished up, and then we have that in hand and ready to advertise it as we work with the facilities master plan and other priorities.
Yeah, I agree. Anyone else on the board have any questions or comments? Anyone in our audience in person have anything to add or any questions? And I don't see anybody with a raised hand. Does anybody in our virtual audience want to ask? Seeing none. Great. So this is actually a review and action item. So we will, I will, someone will move to...
I move that we approve this item for the RFP for cameras.
Second. So let's do a roll call. Student trustee Shepard?
Yes.
Student trustee Debzar?
Yes.
Vice President Mahoney?
Yes.
President Hopwood?
Yes.
Trustee Inkless?
Yes.
Trustee Khan?
Yes.
Trustee Davidson?
I'm the only person in the room when I vote yes.
Thank you. So that motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Director Jaffe. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And you don't need to go anywhere because right now, we have 11B Cornell Elementary restroom renovations.
But may I ask Principal Foresca to join me as well?
Please do.
This is a lot of impact on her campus, and she's done a lot of the communication with her stakeholders.
And I appreciate you being here. Thank you for that.
And I have a presentation. I hope somebody's going to help me with that. So as she's getting that up, just a little bit of reminder, background of where we are with this project. We found out when we did the Cornell playground renovation and DSA reviewed our restrooms that are adjacent to the playground, that they were not compliant with current standards, and they insisted that we make some changes there. I brought that to the board previously. It turned out that since we were needing to remove fixtures from those restrooms, that the board direction was to find a place on campus to reinstate those or add more fixtures so that we didn't have a net loss. And what happened since that meeting is I engaged an architect to come on site, and we toured the site together and identified some locations for possible modifications. And then those, that architect came back with three different locations, which I'd like to show. And then at that point, Principal Foresca took those to her instructional leadership team, staff, student council, school site council, PTA, and parents to get their input into what that, how that might impact the school, or what the pros and cons of those different options would be. And do you have the slideshow? Thank you. Okay. So, yeah, then at that point, those folks from Cornell, their input was, yes, we'd like all three of these options, you know, give us as many bathrooms as you can. That was no surprise. And, but then I went and took each of those and got professional cost estimates for what it would cost to do each of those three options, and then met with Superintendent Stone and CBO Thomas. And through those meetings and analyzing the costs and the benefits, we narrowed it down to just two of those three options that we're bringing to the board tonight. The third one, still kind of in the pocket for a possible Phase Two later on, depending on what other construction might happen at Cornell in the coming years. So, yeah, let's go ahead and go to slide two, please. So this shows, this is a plan view of the campus to orient to Cornell's here, Cornell's there. The current restrooms that are required, the current restrooms that are requiring modification are in yellow, and the two other locations in green are the ones that have been identified as possibles for improvements. And the next slide shows what DSA is asking us to do in the current restroom to provide adequate ADA clearance around all of the facility, all of the fixtures. We'll be removing from the boys' room two urinals and from the girls' room, one toilet, and then repositioning the sinks and changing, you know, a couple other little things in the lower ADA stall. So that's the loss that we would be experiencing. And then, next slide, please. This shows, again, that those locations and what the architect informed us or advised us is the way to get the most out of these spaces is to create all-gender restrooms so that the space can be used, we can get as many fixtures in the space as possible. The little picture in the corner here shows that, like a building C at the high school, these would be floor-to-ceiling doors on the stalls and then a common area for handwashing and for handwashing. And then, so I'll focus in on each of the two areas in green that we identified. Next slide, please. This is the existing restroom that is off of the MPR room. Currently, this restroom is only used at lunchtime because it needs to be monitored. It's upside down so that you can compare side by side. The image on the left shows the current situation, and the bathrooms are right next to an emergency exit. So if kids are left to go there unmonitored, they could easily exit the building. So what we're proposing for this restroom is to flip it and close off those two doors that are, give access to that hallway, and create an opening onto the playground. And then that will allow this bathroom to be used throughout the day at any time. And it also has the added benefit that it could be used during an event and not, it would prevent access to the rest of the building. Currently, the restroom, if you enter from the playground, you can exit into the building. And so this would provide two, there's currently two, there would still be two, but the advantage is that it could be used throughout the day. Any questions on that before I jump to the next slide? Great. So the next one is... Great. So, the next one is a space that we recovered through the HVAC renovation progress, project. This was the old boiler room. So, this housed a huge boiler that ran all of the, the heaters inside the classrooms, and, and since we eliminated those, we eliminated the boiler, and, and now we have a nice space where we can renovate into a restroom. This would, again, be all-gender, two all-gender stalls and a sink. There is an existing utility in there that we would have to sort of create a little closet around, but that would then gain it, we would gain two new restrooms through the renovation of the boiler room. The next slide, any questions about the boiler room? Next slide is estimates of cost. This is conservative estimates. We know that the renovation of the existing restrooms, we had already had that quoted and were ready to contract that previously. We did some of that work over the winter break, when we put in the bottle filler and drinking fountain and some changes to the ADA ramps, and what's remaining there is about $80,000. The soft costs, I just estimate as a percentage of that. The MPR restrooms, around 172 plus soft costs, design costs, boiler room, you can see the numbers. We're looking at about $600,000 to do all of this work. And in terms of timing, if we, depending on what direction the board gives me tonight, we would go immediately into design phase with the architect. We already have our concept designs, so we would go straight to construction drawings, and at that point, the new construction would have to go to DSA for approval. And that's kind of the wild card in most cases. That can take four to six weeks. It could take several months. It's, it's a little unpredictable. It's not a fast process. And then, and we're not allowed to go to, find a contractor until we have DSA approval. So, then we go through that process, bring that to the board, and then, and then schedule it. It would be very aggressive to think that we will do this this summer, at least the new construction. I'm, I'm an optimist. I will do my best, but the wild card is DSA approval. And I think that's, I think that's all I have for you.
Thank you, and thank you for doing your best. We know you do. And so, I had a couple of questions. So, one is the green boxes. It was the multi-use room bathroom and also the boiler room. So, those are both on the ground floor. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then the other one, the renovation, that is upstairs?
The third option that was...
Was that down?
The third option is, was upstairs in a, what is now an outdoor space between the two buildings. And so, there's, it becomes more complicated because we need structural engineers, and we have to be basically enclosed that space. But that, for a future option, that would be great. It would provide restrooms upstairs.
And then the existing restrooms that would be renovated, are those on the ground floor?
Yes.
As well?
This is all, what I showed you is all on the ground floor.
Perfect. And so, you were saying earlier that when you consulted with staff and students at schools, that they would obviously like to have all of those. And so, if that was all done as per the, per the plans, what would be the net gain or loss of restrooms? We talked about some urinals and a stall being reduced, but then we'd gain a couple from the boiler room addition.
I think, so, we would gain just more access through the use of the MPR restaurants. Like, kids would be able to access it all throughout the day more regularly than what they currently do. And really excited about new, new bathrooms. But I will say, the overall net gain is that we're still, we're still down one fixture. So, if we're losing two urinals and a, and a toilet, we would be gaining just two new fixtures. So, yeah, we're not...
You also, you also gained access for the other two, at least during broader part of the day. So, it's, but yeah, I hear you.
Okay, so more availability throughout the day?
More availability, absolutely.
Yeah, great. And then in terms of the funding for this, it's the Facilities Modernization Grant and some bond money. Is that correct?
CBO is nodding, yes.
That's all we need to know. Great. Thank you. Anybody on the board have questions or comments for Director Jaffe?
And I just, I guess, withholding the second floor in the back pocket, so to speak, I guess, we think about that maybe as we go through the facilities master plan. This goes maybe the, to the same question I sort of, we sort of talked about with the cameras, which is, as we firm up plans there, we can figure out how that fits or doesn't fit into whatever that next plan is, as we maybe perhaps address other things in the facilities. Is that the right way for me to think about it?
Yeah, I think that construct, new construction at Cornell is certainly on the table. It's one of the things we're going to be looking hard at, and, and there would be restrooms and, and other things involved with that as well. But i- if there were...
Kind of leading the horse to water, but yeah.
If, you know, if, if modernization of the MPR were considered, the toilet, the bathrooms have been done, you know, that, that, that part of that project would be finished. It wouldn't be impacted.
Anyone else have a question or comment from the board? Anyone in our audience? Anybody virtually? And I'm, oh, here we go. Okay, go, oh, hang on, let me just...
Do you have one quick question?
I see someone, one person on our virtual audience. Go ahead. I think you're muted right now, by the way.
Hello, yes, I just wanted to speak about the gender-neutral bathrooms. I would definitely hope the board considers the, the age group of this, of these children, and I know from my elementary age child, they would not feel comfortable using a gender-neutral bathroom despite the floor-to-ceiling stalls. That would be a huge issue. So, I would definitely say that's a no-go. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Anyone else?
I do have a question.
Go for it.
So, given the possible future work that might happen at Cornell, which I know we don't totally know, but is there a chance any of this would be throwaway work?
No, I don't think so. No, we would be, we would be building this with, with new finishes, and they would, they would be complete bathrooms that...
No, but I'm sorry. I mean, you're not going to, do we know if we would change any of the buildings where the new building, I mean, the new bathrooms are being built?
That, that has not been part of my discussions. What I've, what I've heard is, is the possibility of new construction, maybe where the existing portables are.
I can answer that. We would be very thoughtful about any new construction, and we would be wanting to look at what we've already completed. Part of the reason why we're recommending not doing the upstairs is because I believe that would be throwaway work as opposed to these two areas, which will most likely just be upgrading towards that larger project.
Where they are now, I mean, it's just the most accessible places on campus already. And so, I can't imagine our spaces not having these restrooms moving forward.
Right. Go ahead, Trustee Davidson.
Can I just get a little more clarity? The caller who just called in said, no gender, no gender-neutral. We're still going to have the same gendered bathrooms that we have on the first floor at Cornell, correct?
Yes, that option would still be available for the students.
So, those will be gender-specific, and then the multipurpose ones will be gender-neutral with one fixture in each?
Correct, yes.
And then the new boiler rooms would be gender-neutral with one fixture in each?
Yes.
Okay, so like its own room that's a bathroom?
Yes.
When you talk about one fixture, I have a quick question. Do you mean that, so in, what I saw in that plan is like you could have two cubicles with floor-to-ceiling?
Yes.
Or separate, so they're separate, but they're in the same, you enter into the same unit with one, with a hand-washing station, and then there are two separate?
Yeah, each, each of those stalls is, is just a water closet. Yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
But they'll be able to, they'll share, the sink would be in like a...
A common area.
And what, and, and we've thought, we've thought about our visibility around that, I'm guessing, because we know that can be a problem area.
So, yeah, the way that I understand that it's going to be built is that you can see into the common area. You can see the hand-washing station, so there shouldn't be, there should be enough privacy for, you know, within the stalls and enough visibility for the hand-washing, the shared space.
As a, as a parent of children who had a hard time using the restrooms in the current bathroom arrangement, I think that this is a huge positive step, because there were many times when my students and other students needed to get to a little bit more of a private bathroom space. And, and I think that this would be a really helpful way, and I really appreciate how you both so thoughtfully took the feedback that we gave as a board, and that Assistant Superintendent Shin helped facilitate that conversation previously. Now we're at this point, and the students are really getting something very positive out of sort of a demanded need. So, thank you.
Great, thanks. Anyone else have any questions or comments either here or virtually? And I'm not seeing anyone. Great, thank you both so much. And so, now, we are going to move, hopefully, to approve this. If anybody would like to make that motion?
Yeah, I move to approve the Cornell Elementary restroom renovations.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Shepard?
Yes.
Student trustee Deb Dar?
Yes.
President Hopwood?
Yes.
Trustee Inkless?
Yes.
Trustee Khan?
Yes.
Trustee Davidson?
There's no one over 18 in the room, and I absolutely vote yes.
Vice president Mahoney?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much, and that passes unanimously. So, thank you both for...
Thank you very much.
And we are now moving on to 11C, which is the Certified Management Salary Schedule, and we have our Chief Human Resources Officer, Marina Gonzalez, here for that.
Hi, good eve, can you hear me okay? Good evening, everyone. This is a, sort of a redo of what we did on January 28. On January 28, I brought the Certified Management Salary Schedule. We had two goals. One was to establish a range for the new position for the Program Coordinator for Special Education. And then the second goal was to amend the position titles, title titles for Range 405. But I failed to realize then that the Program Coordinator was for this year, and which we actually have it on the agenda for tonight to hire. And then the position titles, the change was for July 1, to align those changes to the superintendent's org chart starting July 1. And so, this is meant to just sort of correct what we did on that day.
And we already happy to pass that, so we just need to redo that. So, anybody got any questions or comments here or in our audience before we move? I'm not seeing anybody virtually either, so can I get a motion to approve?
I move to approve item 11C. Second.
And, go ahead. I second. And can we get a roll call again, please? Dana did, oh, good, perfect. Dana seconded, not me. Sorry. Didn't hear, yep.
Student trustee Shepard?
Yes.
Student trustee Deb Dar?
Yes.
Trustee Inkless?
Yes.
Trustee Khan?
Yes.
Trustee Davidson?
No one else is in the room, and I vote yes.
Vice president Mahoney?
Yeah.
President Hopwood?
Yes. So, that passes unanimously. Thank you so much. And also, with our Human Resources Officer, again, for item 11D, which is the reduction or discontinuance of certain certificated particular kinds of services for the 25 to 26 school year.
Yes. So, this resolution is a, the short term for it, that we all understand, is it's a layoff. The reason that we're bringing this forward is because these positions are what we call soft-funded. These are being funded through school care donations. It is for a full-time counselor at the middle school, which is a third, they have two district funds through the general fund, and then there's a third that school care funds. And then also, there are two elective sections at the high school that are being funded by school care. And this is just, this is, we've been doing this for many years, not this particular, but we've been working with school care for many years, and each year, they make a funding commitment based on what they've worked on in terms of priorities with principals. We're working with them, specifically Superintendent Stone is working with school care to try to see if there is a way for them to adjust their funding sched, like commitment and schedule so that we don't have to do this each year, and have folks sort of in limbo on whether or not they're going to have that, for instance, the counseling position or the elective courses. And so, that is something that we're working on for the future so that we can avoid this, because even though, I should tell, I should share, that the folks whose positions are being funded by school care are permanent-tenured employees, so they're not actually going to, no one's receiving a layoff notice. It's just a matter of like, we have to wait and see whether the funding is coming through, but even still, it doesn't feel good to sort of be in that limbo place. But we're hoping that we'll be back again next year with these positions. Okay?
Can I just ask a quick clarifying question? Can we get that last slide up, please? Thanks. Because it was, so the purpose was to reduce certificated positions, but then under details, it says classified staff reduced by 6.613. So, I think I...
That's a...
Mentioned that?
Yes, it's a typo.
Okay, that's okay. And then, but that's still, the certificated is 1.4.
1.4 on the resolution, and this is a copy-paste, the next item.
No, that's totally fine. I just want to be clear in case anyone else picks up. Okay, great. And so, the positions that we're talking about are the two, we had a 1.0 counselor, we had a 0.2, 2.2 teachers. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so those are school care?
Yes.
Under positions?
Yes.
Right, okay, great. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments here? Anybody in our audience or in our virtual audience?
I have a question.
Go for it.
What are the elective courses they're teaching?
Computer Science and Art.
I don't think, do we do public comment already? Anybody else on the board has anything to say? Please, please add to it. And I've already asked if anybody else. I didn't see any hands, and I don't see anybody here coming to the podium, so I think we're good. Okay, is anybody ready to move to approve this resolution, 11D?
I move to approve item 11D, resolution number 2024-2516.
I'll second that.
Thanks for me. And then, can we please have a roll call?
Student trustee Shepard?
Yes.
Student trustee Deb Dar?
Yes.
Trustee Khan?
Yes.
Trustee Davidson?
There's no one else over 18 in the room, and yes.
Vice president Mahoney?
Yes.
President Hopwood?
Yes.
Trustee Inkless?
Yes.
Thank you. And I know that Superintendent Stone put something out about school care in the community update last week, which is worth a read for anybody who's wondering what that organization does. Worth contributing to, and also possibly joining the board, because I know they're finding it harder to recruit volunteers. We depend on them. And then we are moving on now to item 11E, which is the reduction of classified services.
And here again, excuse me, this is for a position that is being funded by school care. This is a part-time library technician position at the high school, and all, all the same applies.
Anybody have any questions here or comments from the board? Anybody in our audience or virtually? I'm not seeing anyone. Are we ready to move to approve this resolution?
I move to approve item 11E, resolution number 2024-25-17, reduction of classified services.
I second.
And we'll get a roll call, please.
Students, student trustee Shepard?
Yes.
Student trustee Deb Dar?
Yes.
Trustee Davidson?
No one else is in the room, yes.
Vice president Mahoney?
Yes.
President Hopwood?
Yes.
Trustee Inkless?
Yes.
Trustee Khan?
Yes.
So, that resolution passes unanimously, and thank you so much. And we are now moving on to item 11F, which is the approval of the second interim report and budget revision number two for the 24-25 fiscal year with a positive certification with our interim CBO, Chris Thomas.
Good evening, Superintendent Stone and the board. Thank you for letting me come and present tonight. I'm sure this is the presentation you've all been waiting for all evening long. I have a PowerPoint presentation that I'm going to go through, but before, while we're pulling that up, I want to just orient you to what's in the packet, because... that up, I want to just orient you to what's in the packet, because this is second interim and on paper, I know you guys are seeing it electronically, but it's a lot of data, and it's really good data. So, in the board backup, you'll see just a kind of a quick narrative on what second interim is. And then there's a much longer narrative that I've included that kind of walks you through some of the components of the governor's budget that he proposed in January for next year. And the reason we include that tonight is because we really want to give you a heads up on how we're going to start developing next year's budget. And part of why that's important for a second interim is because it's also informing some of our multi-year projections that we're including. And so I would encourage you, if you haven't already had the chance, go through it. At the end of the PowerPoint, if you have questions about what's in here, I'm happy to just kind of go into more detail or more in-depth. I didn't want to take everybody's time tonight. But there is a lot of data here, including some of the assumptions we're using for the multi-year projections, and so I've included that detail here. The County Office of Education, when we present second interim to them, they'll be going through this with a much more fine-tooth comb to kind of see, have we done a good job in projecting out how we're going to look in the, not only for the current year, but for the next two years. Also included is our enrollment projections. You've seen this now a couple of times. So, we've tweaked it a little bit based on more current enrollment data, and we've also updated a little bit of those attrition factors that we're including, in particular between K and first grade, so we've kind of updated that for a four-year average. Last time you saw it, it was a six-year, six-student per-year average. And then we updated also the TK. Last time I think I was here, it was a hundred and thirty-five, and now it's a hundred and forty. And we've really been looking at our current TK enrollment and contemplating the fact that we're adding three months of TK next year. So, currently, the window ends June second, and then as of next year, we're going to be accepting kids all the way through September first. So, that birthday window for kids who qualify, we're actually adding all of June, July, and August. And so we're anticipating that we could see more students. I think this is actually potentially conservative, because it's certainly not twenty-five percent more, but we're adding twenty-five percent of a window. So, right now, we're taking nine months of birthdays. Now, next year, we're going to be taking all twelve months. TK is optional, so not all parents will choose to put their students in TK, and that's why we're not necessarily projecting a twenty-five percent increase. So, one of the things that these enrollment projections really show is that our enrollment's pretty stable. I've also done enrollment projections for each one of the schools, so I've done them individually to kind of see how that looks. And in particular, I've met with the principals and showed them, including the middle school and the high school, and kind of giving them from a planning perspective what they can expect in the next couple of years. So, this year, we're around thirty-seven fifteen. I say around because it changes month to month. Next year, about thirty-seven twenty-one, and the following year, thirty-seven fourteen. And then primarily because the high school and middle school, we bump up in the out I also included what's called the School Services of California dartboard, and this is the document that we use to kind of project out things like the Consumer Price Index, the Cost of Living Adjustment, the STIRS and PERS rates, et cetera. So, with that, I'm going to just go ahead and go on to the PowerPoint. I would point out, I guess, one last document, which is this Common Message. This is developed by county offices of education across the state. It's called, their group is called CSESAA, and they get together and they really talk about what is the guidance that districts need, and so they, they put it in this document for districts to see. It's all online, all this data is attached. If you look at the attachments to the agenda, we've kind of attached them individually so that you could kind of see them. And then there's also this spreadsheet that I do. It kind of gives you the variance from the first interim report and the second interim, and kind of shows you, I may be referring to this a little bit as I go through the PowerPoint. And again, at the end, if you have questions that are more specific and detailed, please feel free to ask those questions. Okay, so tonight, this PowerPoint presentation is based on these documents, which are also all of the state reports, and there's a lot of good information in here, too. At the very back, there's a thirty-two-page report called the Criteria and Standards, and that really has, it forces districts to kind of walk through the work that we've done and tells us whether or not we're meeting basic thresholds, or are we operating within a normal range or without a nor, and if we're operating outside of it, or if there's a variance that it doesn't like, we have to explain why. So, feel free to take a look at that, too. So, reporting cycle, you know, we have, this is our budget process. It's really kind of an eighteen-month process that we follow. We have our adopted budget, which we're now going to be moving very, very diligently into. We revise the budget regularly. We bring a first interim report in December, which is reporting as of October thirty-first. This is our second interim report, in which we're really presenting to you the fiscal position of the district as of January thirty-first. We do not have to have a third interim. In my entire career, we've never, I've never done a third interim. Some districts have to. And then, of course, we close the books and we present to you unaudited actuals. So, we just kind of talked about that. It's really for, in an effort for us to communicate to you and to the community and to the County Office of Education as our oversight body, how do we look? You know, given our current, the current information that we have, what is the fiscal position that we show, not only for this year, but for two subsequent years? It's required under AB twelve hundred. We've updated it based on all of the most current information that we can glean. So, for example, one of the major variances that I highlighted in the report in our revenues is our local interest earnings are up by about two hundred thousand dollars. And in large part, that's because, as we've been going through analyzing our general ledger, we see that the county office posted interest earnings after we closed the books for the fourth quarter of last year. And so we updated the budget to reflect, we had to record that interest for this year. But because it's for last year, it's one-time in nature, because we would anticipate not doing that again next year. And if you look at the assumptions and the multi-year projections, because that's one-time revenue, we pull that out when we project next year's local revenue. We reduce it by about two hundred thousand dollars. But those are some of the current data that we're looking at. We also recalculated our LCFF, and we were actually down about twenty-six thousand dollars, even though our ADA is up slightly. And the reason for that is, when we're projecting ADA, we project it based on grade span, TK to third grade, fourth through fifth, or fourth through sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth through twelfth. If that ADA is up or down between the grade spans, each grade span gets a different dollar amount. So, for example, if we have fewer TK ADA, we get that augmentation of over three thousand dollars, then we lose potentially three thousand dollars for every ADA, even though we may still have it in the, in the K through third grade area. So, twenty-six thousand is pretty immaterial compared to the overall LCFF, but it's important to note that as those shift and change, then our LCFF can shift and change. We'll look at the multi-year projections in another slide. I'll kind of show you how they look overall. We've adjusted for actual staffing, and so, you know, we have, districts have staffing shifts throughout the year. Some staff, like custodians, may leave, and we hire new custodians. We look at things like substitute costs. Substitute costs can be a pretty significant item in a budget, especially after the pandemic, because sub-costs increase in that we started paying people a lot more per day, which is a good thing. For years, districts paid subs a hundred dollars a day generally, and now it's well over two hundred in most cases. So, those substitute costs, we paid close attention to, because we want to make sure at this time of the year, we can tell, are we on track? Do we need to increase? Do we need to decrease? And then, of course, we have all our state-required reports in here, and that includes all of our other funds, by the way. So, you can see all of the other funds are under the general fund, and you can see what those are projected to be. We are coming to you with a positive certification tonight. There's three different ones, as you know, positive, qualified, or negative. Positive means we will meet our fiscal obligations for the current year and two subsequent. Qualified, we may not. Negative, we won't. Simply the difference. And then our enrollment trends. I've updated this, but you can see we're pretty flat for enrollment, and that's a good thing in a, in an environment that we're living in. A lot of districts in California are declining in enrollment, and even with some of the safety measures of being able to use prior year ADA or that three-year average, growth, as I like to say, is a good problem to have. We talked about the local control funding formula. I've put on this slide kind of where enrollment was, from adopted to first interim, and then now at second interim. Also, I included the P two ADA. You can see the adopted budget was just over thirty-four hundred ADA. At first interim, we were projecting thirty-five twenty. We're using our P one data, period one attendance, that we take as of month six, actually, I think month four, excuse me. We use that and projected now where we think our P two ADA is going to be. This actually might be a little bit conservative. I'm hoping P two will be a little bit higher, but we're projecting just under thirty-five thirty-two, which is still an increase from December's projection. And then our UPP, or Unduplicated Pupil Count, was up by one. When we looked at the actual certified CAL pads, it shifted by one. And then we talked about that slight decrease of twenty-six thousand. We did not adjust our lottery ADA, I mean, our lottery revenue. We looked at it, we looked like we're right on track. Federal revenue, slight change to Title Two, very slight. Other local revenue, or other state revenues, we saw some reductions in CTE. The SLP grant was a hundred and thirty-five thousand, it's paying for a large contract we have. And then we received a new literacy screening grant from the state of about sixteen thousand that we included in this budget. We talked about our interest earnings. And then the parcel tax, we actually had to reduce by thirty-two thousand. There was some renters rebate that they processed, and so they sent us the information to reduce that. And then we budgeted a lot of other local revenues. It's amazing how many local donations our school sites are able to bring in for various types of things, whether it's PTA, booster club, field trips, AP testing. But in addition to that, we received a Teacher of the Grant Award for one of our schools at thirty thousand, and there was a Wellness Coach Grant for as much as three hundred and eighty-two thousand. I say as much because it's a reimbursement grant, well, they, where they will reimburse us up to three hundred and eighty-two, depending on how much staffing costs we have for that. But we've put the full amount in the budget. And then we do see an increase to our restricted programs, in particular, special education. So, this kind of just gives you a detail of what our contributions are. So, overall, we are contributing almost ten million dollars, nine point six million from our unrestricted into our restricted programs, and it breaks down generally this way. So, routine restricted maintenance, much of which the budget that Mr. Jaffe oversees is about one point nine million. That's a requirement. If at any point we received under Prop A state modernization money, we had to commit to maintaining our facilities. This is long ago, but most districts made that commitment. And then special education, about six point nine million dollars, which represents almost ten percent of our overall budget. Pupil transportation, about a hundred and eighty-seven. School care was generous enough to fund us some of the positions you saw tonight, but there was matching responsibility for that, too, and so we had to match about eighty-five thousand. And then Title Four, about six thousand. The UPK grant, which was the Universal Preschool Grant, which is, this is the final year. It actually supports one of our TK classes, but we're making a contribution because it wasn't adequate. That will go away next year because we're spending that final amount this year. And then educator effectiveness, that's the final year of this grant for us as well, so that contribution will go away. And then we are making those two contributions for the curriculum adoptions and for the one-to-one device replacement. So, looking, that was all focused on revenue. So, now we're looking at the expenditure side. What we do over the last few months is we're reconciling position control to our budget. So, as people are paid, position control drives our payroll, we're making sure that's in alignment with our budget. We actually had to transfer two sections out of our Prop twenty-eight for the middle school, because as we analyzed their staffing, Prop twenty-eight is the art and music block grant, and it's very, very clear and very specific that you have to supplement what you have been doing, which means whatever we did last year, we have to continue doing this year and then add using Prop twenty-eight. But when we analyzed the middle school staffing, based on some concerns that were raised, we actually were able to confirm that two of those sections really would have been considered supplanting, so we took them out of Prop twenty-eight and moved them back to the base or the unrestricted budget. Prop twenty-eight money is not lost, it will carry over, and so we will have that money then to plan for, for next year. But that required an adjustment in budget. And then we have a new superintendent, so we went in, analyzed our new superintendent's budget and made adjustments. Substitute costs, we talked about. In the classified area, very similar. We actually increased the budget for additional custodial support. We know that, based on much of what was presented earlier this evening, that we need to really have a focus on how do we work on improving the health and safety by improving the cleanliness of our schools. And then, again, you have an open CBO position, who you just filled tonight, and so there are shifts between that salary and how that you guys pay me for my services, and those shifts in budget were made. And then, again, we looked at sub-budgets. Employee benefits, I kind of listed this out here. We've adjusted for STIRS and PERS. Our OZ, or Social Security, hasn't changed. Medicare SUI. Workers' comp rate has stayed at two point four two. We adjust health and welfare based on actual utilization. And then, of course, we have that retirement benefit that we pay three percent into. Materials and supplies, I've tried to kind of highlight, when you see these numbers, forty-three hundred and forty-four hundred, those are what we consider objects. Forty-three hundred is a consumable, like a material and supplies. So, we do a lot of transfers between various objects to address the needs of the schools and the departments. So, for example, a school site might say, we want to take money out of materials and supplies because we need to buy a new printer, or we need to buy a new piece of equipment. So, we'll move it from a forty-three hundred to a forty-four hundred, forty-four hundred being non-capital equipment. One of the things we identified as we were analyzing the cost of our leases and rental budgets is that we actually were paying for a debt service on some computer replacement purchases that were made two or three years ago, that really should have been categorized as debt service. It was interest and principal on a purchase agreement. So, we moved it out of that fifty-six hundred and into a seventy-four, thirty-eight, thirty-nine for interest and principal on that debt service. So, you'll see those adjustments in the budget. And then other contracts, I went in and we analyzed those. There's a lot in other contracts, so I know that's a very large chunk of money. It encompasses a wide range of types of expenditures, anything from software licensing, huge amount of money that we pay out for software licensing, things like our ARES, our Student Information System, things for Escape, which is our financial database. So, it also includes things like fingerprinting for our fingerprinting services, routine restricted maintenance contracts. There's a lot of contracts we pay for people to come in and service our mechanical equipment, for example. The Wellness Coach, we had to increase the budget because that's where we're initially budgeting that amount of money. That may shift to a different type of category, depending on, once we actually know what we're going to exactly do with those funds. The aquatics program has a lot of contracts that we use for cleaning the pool, for example, or balancing the chemicals. Special education contracts are a significant amount. So, we have a lot of non-public school contracts and non-public agency contracts, things like, oh, we need nursing services, and so we'll contract out for a nurse. Or we can't find this special education teacher, so we contract with an agency to provide those services, and that would all be in your fifty-eight hundred category. There was a new thing that we did this year, it's not really new in the accounting, school accounting world, but the idea of sub-contracts, sub-agreement contracts, which are in the fifty-one hundred. So, for example, our ELOP program with the YMCA, that is a large contract of probably close to a million dollars. It's actually four different contracts, because it's one contract for each school. We're only allowed to charge indirect on the first twenty-five thousand of that contract for each school. So, we categorize that in a fifty-eight hundred, and anything over and above that, we put in a fifty-one, because that way we know not to charge indirect on that portion. So, it's an accounting thing that we have to do. And then we also went through the fifty-nine hundreds, which is our communications budgets, and we noticed we really needed to budget for the internet contract, which is about nine thousand, and then we increased our postage budget up. nine thousand, and then we increased our postage budget up. So I apologize if I spent too much detail, but I just kind of wanted to go through and give some context, because that fifty eight hundred is a big bucket, but it's made up of a lot of things. We do have some capital outlay expenditures, in particular, for the kitchen equipment grant that we have. And that kitchen equipment replacement grant, it's close to three hundred thousand dollars, but it's not just for equipment. It can also pay for infrastructure. And so our food service program purchased four electric ovens. I think Superintendent Stone highlighted the electrification project in her presentation. Part of that project was converting some of the ovens in the central kitchen from gas to electric. So they purchased the electric ovens, but there was not electrical capacity to support them. So we're now working with our maintenance department to hire a contractor to upgrade the electrical. So we moved that from a sixty four hundred into a building improvement. And that leads us to what are our reserves and our fund balances look like. And so we have revolving cash of around twenty five thousand. Our restricted reserves include the SALPA reserve that we maintain for that SALPA budget. We maintain our three percent required reserve at just two million one hundred and thirty five thousand. I would really like to recommend that the district consider and that the board really give us direction to add an additional three percent minimally, so you have a six percent reserve for economic uncertainty. I talked to Superintendent Stone about looking at board policy, but you could also do it through the budgeting process, where we could, at the next budget revision and in the adopted budget, include an additional assignment where we're setting aside not only our minimum and that three percent reserve requirement is a minimum three percent, but setting aside an additional three percent for economic uncertainty, so that you literally have about four point two million. And that's something that Superintendent Stone and I talked about, but I really think it would be an important next step for the district to really ensure that fiscal solvency. We'll talk about in a few minutes the risks that we see to the budget. And, you know, given some of the level of risk that we're facing, I think it would be an important thing to do. And then we have our ending fund balance of just under six point eight million. Excuse me. That represents about a nine and a half percent reserve budget. Remember, the state comes in with a ten percent cap. We're not under that, subject to that ten percent cap either this year or next year, which you'll see in my narrative. But it's something that we kind of keep an eye on. And then this also includes an audit adjustment that you'll see in the audit report. So there's an audit adjustment that's adjusting our beginning fund balance by about seven hundred thousand dollars. So that improves our situation by about seven hundred thousand dollars. This is just kind of a visual on how our revenues look. You can see the LCFF is the lion's share at sixty four percent. That didn't used to be that way under the former revenue limit. It was a much smaller slice of the pie, and those categoricals were much larger. You can see that federal slice at one percent. That's a very small percentage. The majority of that, for us, is special education funding. And then our state percent at fifteen. And then the parcel tax, fourteen percent of our overall revenue. That is significant. It really is. And then our local revenues at just about six percent. And then on the expenditure side, you can see the majority of our general fund is in salary and benefits, about seventy seven percent. When we look at it for just the unrestricted, the percentage is closer to ninety percent. It's much higher. But overall, because we have things like that equipment assistance grant of two or three hundred thousand, although those large special ed contracts. So it's smaller overall, but larger in the unrestricted. So you can see kind of how that looks visually. Materials and supplies being a pretty small chunk, benefits being a very large percentage for us. So for our multi-year projections, we used a lot of assumptions. We're assuming step in column costs increase. We're assuming COLA in the DART board, which may be not conservative enough. I mean, honestly, the COLA for next year went from two point nine three last time we were here to two point four three this time, so it went down. People are actually talking about it maybe being more like two point three percent. We don't know. But that, we think next year's COLA is probably close. Over three percent for the following year probably is overly optimistic. But we use the DART board because we have to have a source document to use for our projections. But it is a risk to the budget, and so we'll talk about that in a second. Okay, here, sorry. Here's some of the assumptions. So you can see the COLA lottery, we're assuming no change, or mandated block grants, the STIRS rate, no change. PERS, I did include an increase because the PERS rate is slated to go from twenty seven point oh two right now to twenty seven point four and then twenty seven point five the following year. That is a real risk. It should say twenty seven, not two hundred and eighty seven, twenty seven point five. But that does represent a risk because PERS rate is set each year by the PERS board, where STIRS is set by the state board, and that those rates have remained stable for the past couple of years at least. But the PERS board, and when I look at the stock market, because a lot of it is based on their investments and how well they're doing, it makes me a little bit nervous about where that PERS rate might go in the out year. So it's something to kind of keep an eye on. LCFF revenues, we're using ninety five and a half to ninety six percent attendance factor, which is what we're seeing right now in our current attendance. Restricted federal, not much change. We've taken out any little one-time we're getting based on prior year, and then we're adding about a two percent COLA. State, slight increases. We're reducing it for some one-time, like that UPK and that educator effectiveness type of funds. Other local, we're reducing our unrestricted by that two hundred thousand dollar in interest prior year adjustment. And then for the restricted other local, we looked at the ballot language for both measures, and Measure G definitely has a three percent inflation factor written in. Our older measure has some language around action the board could take, but my understanding is the board hasn't taken action to add inflation on that. So we only factored in the Measure G inflation. And then on the expenditures, again, we included step in column costs. We're assuming health and welfare, medical increases in particular, around six percent. That's about two hundred and eighty two thousand dollars per year, assumed increase without anything else changing. And that's just the unrestricted. We're assuming an additional hundred and sixty eight in the restricted. So overall, it's over four hundred. PERS increases, we talked about. It's about forty one thousand for next year, and then only about five thousand the following. No changes in other driven costs, inflation on materials and supplies. Again, we took out some one-time and other operating, like the election costs we had this year. We won't have again next year. And then the restricted, anyway, the restricted same stuff for the step in column, et cetera, and the medical. But for the materials and supplies and other operating, there's more dramatic changes because we have a significant amount in carryover. Did it change? There it goes. I think there's a little delay. Anyway, materials and supplies, we're reducing by a million dollars because there's about a million dollars. So think about Prop twenty, which is for textbooks, materials and supplies, that carryover, we only budget if we have it. So we take it out of the adopted budget. Things like ELOP, again, we're taking about three million dollars out of one time. And then we add in about a five percent inflation for other contract services. We're doing five percent, not two percent, in particular because of the special education contract costs. And then no change in capital outlay. So what does that look like with all of those various assumptions? Our deficit spending for next year looks like about a hundred and eighty thousand. And then our deficit spending is eliminated for twenty six, twenty seven. The big change there is because the COLA went up. It went from three percent roughly to three point nine. So, I know, again, that may not be realistic, but that is what the DART board shows. And so you can just kind of see what our ending fund balance ends up being. looking at the recommendation we're making and kind of noting some of those important risks, right? So, again, we're recommending a positive certification because our budget is very solid. Even with these risks, our budget is very solid. We have good reserves. The deficit spending has been reduced from what we originally projecting. It does reflect a structural deficit next year of a hundred and seventy nine. It's important to note, the COLA in both years may not come in at what the DART board is saying. May come in slightly lower. It could be higher next year, but the following year, I know it won't be higher than three point nine. There's a lot of uncertainty around some of the federal administration policies that are happening right now. We don't know the impact. I believe one of the callers wanted to know what that would look like, and we're actually in the process of tracking that very closely and trying to collect data on what some of those policy changes might look like for us. But you saw the slice of the pie for federal was very small. I think the bigger question for us is not, is our federal revenue going to be impacted? The bigger question is, are we facing fiscal uncertainty here in the state because of the overall economy and the impacts on that? And what does that look like for us? How do some of those state revenues get impacted? The COLA is in statute, so the statute formulas will drive the COLA. But the state doesn't even have to fund the COLA. They can suspend the COLA. Like, if it's a two and a half percent COLA, I've seen years where they only funded one percent or they suspended it altogether. So even if the COLA remains strong, can the state economy continue to support it? I don't want to be doom and gloom because there's still a lot of positives out there in the environment, but there are definitely red flags starting to become clear to many of the economists out there. And it's something, as we're planning for the future, to kind of be aware of so that we don't get out over our skis too far. There are also no raises built into these multi-year projections, so any kind of increases in compensation that we give has to be factored into what the impact would be on the overall budget. It's dependent on stable enrollment. I believe our enrollment is pretty stable. Things could happen, so it's something that we'll want to watch very closely as we start really gearing up for next year. Including the attendance factor, I mean, we've had a pretty bad flu season, but we've managed actually pretty well when we've looked at, we've been tracking our ADA month by month to make sure we haven't seen any significant dips. And so we're really looking forward to May, when the governor will come out with his May revise, to see how do we look at that point. We will have, we'll know what the April revenues are for the state, and that will help guide us on how the economy is faring for next year, at least from a state budget perspective. So our next steps, we've moved already into budget development for next year. We're looking at enrollment projections. We're looking at staffing projections. We're working with our site administrators on that. We're looking at starting budget development. We just asked the county office to roll and open our fiscal year for next year so we can start working in it. The LCAP development is underway as well. We're looking at the May revise because, once we get into May, we'll be adjusting based on that. And then we'll be looking at scheduling by we. We will be looking at scheduling the public hearing in June with that final budget that we bring forward. So I know I've gone over a ton of information. Sorry if I was too verbose, but I'm happy to answer any questions. No one loves to talk budget more than me, so.
That was great. Thank you. And we are pretty much at time with this item, but if anybody has any questions or comments, but I would just say actually one thing positively. I mean, given that surrounding districts are having a really hard time, West Contra Costa, Oakland, San Francisco, this is great, so I appreciate all of your work. Anybody here on the board have a question or a comment?
I'll do the mild version before it gets to Josh. For the enrollment projections, I know that the document's been updated as of March. Does that also include, like, our intent to return forms? Like, are we looking at that date already or not?
We are, but the date is really toward the end of March. And so we've talked about next year, actually considering moving that up. A lot of districts really do it more early March so that we can get that data earlier on. But we still have a couple of weeks to go before we get to, like, the priority enrollment date. But we are looking at it. And in fact, we've developed some tools that we're using that we'll consider, and the principals, we're working with them on looking at current enrollment, what information we do. We have of students moving out, student interest in maybe moving between school sites, and then, you know, looking at those inter-district transfers if necessary. So we're tracking on all of that and making changes. My recommendation is we actually meet every two weeks or weekly as we get closer.
Makes sense. My second question is just, help me understand the attendance recovery bit in the attachment that you shared. I noticed that it mentions, like, we can use ELOP to kind of recover attendance up to ten days or the number of absences, whatever is less. I guess my question is, are we utilizing this in a way that kind of maximizes, like, who our chronically absent students are? Or also, in the document, it says it mitigates the fiscal impacts, but I'm wondering, is it mitigating it to the full extent, or is it like just a small help? Or, because I know funding obviously is based on whether or not they're here during the school year, so.
That's an option. How much we're effectively using it, I can't answer. It'd probably be a student services question. We do use independent study pretty effectively, and we can use up to fifteen days because we don't offer long-term independent study here. So I know that we are using that pretty effectively. We're also tracking it because that can be a high-risk area as well, to make sure we have all those agreements in place and that the language is perfect. It has to be, the board policy and contracts have to be in compliance with, is it AB 130, I think, or SB 130? So there are some legalities around it, but the recovery program that you're talking about, I'm not sure how much we're using that. And I know we're not using ELOP for that.
Any more questions or comments on the board?
I got some. First off, thank you for the presentation. So it's, I might be the only person other than you, but this is always one of my favorite parts of the board meeting. I also want to say, kudos, and I don't take it lightly that a positive certificate, you know, it looks like another positive certification. I want to echo what President Hopwood said earlier, which, thank you, which is that, like, you see districts all around us in a much, much more severe place, and I think we shouldn't take it for granted that despite all the challenges in funding and education and what have you, the fact that we're able to kind of put together a budget that we feel confident on a three-year basis is great. A couple of areas of concern or callouts, or, you know, first of all, I would love to get your, as someone who has been doing this longer than I, you know, one of the things, I look at the budget and see that twenty nine, thirty percent of our income is spent on benefits. And given the volatility of STIRS, PERS, and those rates and lack of control there, feels like high, but you've got, it feels high and feels like a risk to me. You've got a lot more experience in the space about whether or not that number is higher than you see, higher than usual in your experience or lower. So I'd love to kind of get your take on it before I make my own judgments.
I would say that our benefit costs are higher than the norm for a couple of different reasons. Number one, we're a member of the CALPERS, and CALPERS, you have very little opportunity to make any changes, I mean, if any. So CALPERS is one of them, but the bigger part of CALPERS that's problematic and that's driving some of our costs is the fact that they have this retiree benefit component that, you know, is built in, and it's a good thing for our employees and for our retirees very clearly. But it is a cost item. So that OPEB, you saw at the actuarial report that was done a couple of meetings ago, the costs are pretty significant. So we actually build in three percent for retirement benefits to help annually offset the cost of OPEB or other benefits, other post-benefit retirements other than retirement. So, yeah, our benefits, plus we have a pretty generous benefit package in which, you know, we pay a significant amount toward health and welfare benefits. And so the combination of those things makes our benefit package or our employee benefits overall expensive. The other big component of it is STIRS and PERS. And we don't have any control over that. I mean, PERS used to be, back in the day, anywhere from thirteen point oh two percent to zero. So in the years that PERS was doing really well, the rate was literally zero for two or three years in a row, and now it's twenty seven point oh five percent. So for every dollar we pay, we're paying twenty seven cents into PERS. That is an expensive cost. That is an expensive cost and one that's outside of our control. STIRS, 19%, it used to be, I mean, for 40 years, it was eight and a quarter, to give you an idea. And then it ratcheted up to 19%. So those are also big components that we don't have any control over.
And then I, you know I'm by an agreement on the DART board on COLA, so I appreciate, I appreciate some reinforcement on that. And then I guess lastly, I want to say thank you for bringing some color to the 5800 line item. And even kind of going forward, I'm probably always going to have questions around that group because it ends up being a non-trivial part of the budget, and it's a little bit opaque, so the more we can do, just bringing transparency to that going forward would be great. And so today was great, so I appreciate that.
And in other districts, I've actually expanded that 58 to include more detail so that you can see how much is the audit, how much was the election cost, how much are non-public school, non-public agencies? So that's certainly something that can be easily designed into the tool here to provide more transparency if that's an interest by the board. Some boards went less and some boards went more. The spreadsheets were a new thing here that I don't think you guys had seen before. I brought those, but that's a tool that we could expand.
That's great. Thank you so much.
All helpful. And now trustee Davidson, go ahead.
Okay, I'll just be really quickly quick, but I'm so glad you said that you could expand that 5800, particularly on that, the non-public school placement and some of that information. I think that's something that our board has been missing for a really, really long time, and it would be really helpful to have that information. And my one question was, do we think that kind of with our rethinking and reworking of our special education department and positions, maybe we can spend a little bit less there and then that over 3% into our reserve could become a reality because it's been impossible for Albany Unified and the whole time that I've been involved in the district to get above that? And we've like scraped to keep just meeting the 3%. So I think it would be wonderful if the board had more information on those specifics because we can actually make changes. Thank you.
And on your point about the additional 3%, you have the wherewithal, because it's really a one-time change. It's a one-time change. When you looked at the available budget over the 3% and $25,000 and the SELPA, you have the wherewithal to add that 2% or 3% and still have a significant amount available over and above your six, what would be 5% or 6%. So you have the opportunity based on, you know, that $700,000 audit adjustment, that improvement, you have the ability to do that right now without having to really make any other changes. And then what we'll do is recommend redesigning these spreadsheets for your adopted budget. So starting with next year, it will provide more detail in the 5800s moving forward.
Great, thank you so much. Do we have any other questions or comments before we vote on this? Can I, a motion to? Sorry, go ahead, thank you.
Hi, I had a, I'm Shannon, I'm a parent in the district. I have a question slash comment. I think the presentation today was really helpful. Unfortunately, it was posted, it wasn't posted at all until I think sometime during the meeting. There was no access to this presentation for parents for, once the board, this is the second time I've made this request. I really think that these budget documents are really dense, and if parents and community members are going to have any ability to look at it, we really need it ahead of time. I don't know if the board gets it ahead of time, but we should get it ahead of time. It's really very difficult for anybody to look and think through what they might want to say or write the school board about. Secondly, there's really not very clear information about this, about Prop 28. I think that's something that we've brought up multiple times of like, really, we would like to see a detailed accounting of where the Prop 28 money went this past year and where it is planning to go. There was a lot of talk at the end of the year last year about engaging the community, engaging parents, engaging, none of that has happened as far as I know yet. It's not, it's not late, but it's probably time to start those conversations, and we haven't even seen what happened to the money last year, much less what's planning to move forward for this year, so thank you.
Thank you so much for that comment. Anybody else in our virtual audience or in person here with questions or comments? And I'm not seeing any, so if we would, someone would move to approve the budget report?
One more public comment.
I keep looking and then, and then, okay, here we go, hang on. Okay. Go ahead, I can see you online.
Yes, I just wanted to echo exactly what the other parent said. I completely agree with everything she said, and I think that transparency is critical, especially when it comes to budget. Making it available to us is exactly what needs to happen. So I'm right there with the other parent. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Right, don't see any more anywhere, so would we like to move to approve?
I move to approve the approval of the second interim report and budget revision number two for the 24, 2024, 2025 fiscal year with a positive certification.
I'll second. Great, and then could we get a roll call, please?
Sorry, I heard someone on the Zoom. Student Board Member McKenzie?
Yes.
Shepherd, excuse me. Student Board Member Deodar?
Yes.
Vice President Mahoney?
Yes.
President Hopwood?
Yes.
Trustee Inkless?
Yes.
Trustee Khan?
Yes.
Trustee Davidson?
I am still the only person in this room, and yes.
Thank you. Great, that passes unanimously, thank you so much. And then we are moving now to 11G, the first portion of 11G, which is the 23 to 24 AUSD Annual Financial Audit Report, and it's CBO Thomas again, thank you.
So, yes, thank you again, and we do, we did work on completing our annual financial audit, and so it was uploaded to the state February 28th. So we have a representative Valerie here from Kristi Whitten Associates to present the financial audit to you. I would say that it is a clean audit, there are no audit findings, and, but she'll kind of walk you through some of the details. Is she?
I'm here, hello.
Oh, Valerie Shaw, yes. Hi Valerie, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I'll turn it over to you.
Perfect, thank you. And thank you all for having me, I'm glad to be here. I'm here to present your 2324 Annual Audit Report. And as Chris mentioned, we are able to give you a great audit. We've given you unmodified opinions on all three sections, which includes the financial statements, federal compliance, and state compliance, and unmodified opinions are the best opinion we can give, so that's fantastic. We had no audit findings. You had one audit finding in the previous year's audit report, and we were able to review that and make sure that that's been rectified, so we don't have that finding continuing forward, so that's great news. As she mentioned in her budget presentation, we did have audit adjustments related to workers' compensation, some things that weren't properly reconciled in past years that have been since reconciled and were determined to be overaccrued, so we've been able to clean that up. And otherwise, just a fantastic report. We had no major changes for the GASB or any other accounting pronouncements, so we didn't have to implement anything that really changed what the audit report looks like or the information contained in. One of the major changes that you might see and probably the board would notice probably more than anyone else is the board page got moved to its own section now, so it's not part of the notes to supplementary information, it's actually in its own other information section, so you'll see that a little deeper into the report. But again, otherwise, no major changes. And I'll just kind of walk through the structure of our audit. So we tend to split it up into two or three sections. So the springtime, we do internal control testing, we do a lot of the state compliance testing, the state asks us to look at a lot of different areas. And we begin the federal compliance testing. We also look at school site attendance and the student body accounting at the school sites. And then when we return in the fall, that's when we actually look at your unaudited actuals and we make sure all the information contained in there is accurate, and we pull together this audit report. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to walk through any of the sections or answer any questions you might have.
So anybody on the board have any questions? Nope, not seeing any. And anybody here in our audience or in our virtual audience have questions about the audit report? Again, I am seeing none. So thank you so much, that synopsis. And I think we can now close this item and, say again? What, it just says accept, it doesn't say to actually approve, but we do not need to vote on this one, just says to accept it, as in we have it presented.
You do need to vote on it, yes.
We do, okay, great, all right, so do you want to move to?
I move to accept the 2023, 2024 Albany Unified School District Annual Financial Audit Report Bond Measures BNE, et cetera.
Second. Roll call, please.
Student Board Member Shepherd?
Yes.
Student Board Member Deodar?
Yes.
Or, excuse me, President Hopwood?
Yes.
Trustee Inkless?
Yes.
Trustee Khan?
Yes.
Trustee Davidson?
Still the only one in the room, yes.
Vice President Mahoney?
Yes.
Thank you. Great, that has been accepted. Thank you very much. And now we will move on to 11H, again, CBO Chris Thomas for appointments to the Albany Unified School District Citizens Bond Oversight Committee.
Yes, so after our last board meeting, we did actively recruit for additional members, and we were able to identify two additional members. And I'm happy to report that when you, or if and when you appoint them tonight, that we will be almost full, we'll have still two vacancies, so we'll go back out and try to continue recruiting. But this is, you know, it will be a very good membership for this committee. We do have our next meeting on the 19th, and so we have invited the members that have already been appointed, and then we will invite these two additional members, Ross Culverwell and Erin Tiedemann, both of which will serve as public at large. So we're super excited to welcome them onto the committee in March, next week.
That's great. I'm so glad that it's almost fully staffed.
I would add, even though the bond oversight, the bond performance audit did not come tonight, it'll come at the next board meeting, we will be presenting it to them. We believe we'll have that report ready to go, so we'll present it to the bond oversight committee at that meeting next week, and then we'll bring it back to you all for approval on the 25th. So they'll get to see it.
Perfect, great.
And then start working on their annual report, hopefully.
Great. Thank you for sharing that. For, not report, the committee. Okay, so we, I guess, are we voting to appoint, to approve these members? Once we, yeah, we can have comments, but yeah, I'm just wondering how we're moving forward with that. Yeah, does anybody have a comment about this, these two new appointments, other than that we're thrilled that they are joining the committee? Anybody in the public have comments about the appointments to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee? Not seeing any, anybody in our virtual audience? Also not seeing any, okay.
I move to approve the appointment of Erin Tiedemann and Ross Culver to the Albany Unified School District Citizens Bond Oversight Committee.
My second. We get a roll call, please.
Student Board Member Shepherd?
Yes.
Student Board Member Deodar?
Yes.
Trustee Inkless?
Yes.
Trustee Khan?
Yes.
Trustee Davidson?
Still the only person in the room, yes.
Vice President Mahoney?
Yeah.
President Hopwood?
Yes.
And so that is, has been approved. And so now we can move on to, I don't know why I think it's funny every time Vonnie says that there's no one in the room, I just think it's hilarious, yeah. Okay, moving on now to 11I, which is the agreement with Orbach, Huff &amp; Henderson LLP for Legal Services, and again, it's CBO Thomas to approve the agreement.
As you can see, we've been a little busy. So we are recommending tonight adding this law firm, Orbach, Huff &amp; Henderson, really to represent us in our contract and moving forward with money of our construction projects. So we've talked tonight earlier, Superintendent Stone mentioned to you about the master planning process. There is a lot of work to be done. We have 64 million in bond proceeds, there's about a million left in the former bond, and then we have about 10 million left in our state modernization funds. And so as we look at how are we going to spend that 74, 75 million dollars, we want to make sure that we're doing good recruitment and procurement processes to identify an architect, to assist us with master planning, also just looking at tightening up our contracts, making sure that our cupka is up to date and everything else. So having a law firm that specializes in really bond contract work is super important, and contract work in general. We have a lot of contracts, as you saw on the 5800, so I would recommend that we kind of look at some of the standard contracts we use, make sure they're updated, and this is a firm that really specializes in that work. I mentioned in the report that we use two or three other law firms already that specialize in their area, including our bond counsel. So this is really just adding another tool in our toolbox to make sure that we're in compliance as we move forward with some of this significant work that needs to get done.
Great, thank you for that. So anybody have questions or comments about this agreement for legal services? Anybody in our audience, in our virtual audience? I'm not seeing anyone. Can I get a motion to approve?
I move to approve the agreement with Orbach and Huff &amp; Henderson LLP for Legal Services.
I'll second. Get a roll call, please.
Student Board Member Shepherd?
Yes.
Student Board Member Deodar?
Yes.
Trustee Khan?
Yes.
Trustee Davidson?
Surprise, it's just me!
Yes. Is President Mahoney?
Yes.
President Hopwood?
Yes.
Trustee Inkless?
Yes.
She has to do that, she has to say it.
I know, but we've done so many of them this evening. So that agreement is approved unanimously, thank you everyone. And now we are moving on to item 12, which is superintendent and board member reports. Superintendent Stone?
Thank you. Tonight, I'm actually going to read a statement that I prepared for my superintendent report. First, I want to acknowledge the concerns raised regarding the Know Your Rights workshop that took place a few weeks ago. I want to thank our community for reaching out and for thoughtful emails and for people even calling in tonight outlining concerns. I appreciate advocacy, your advocacy and your commitment to working together as we navigate these complex and important issues. And I want to remind our community that at the heart of our work is a common purpose, which is to combat hate in all forms and to ensure that every student feels safe, cared for, and has a true sense of belonging. And while the Know Your Rights event was focused solely on immigrant rights, I do recognize that the concerns that were brought to my attention about the organization involved in supporting that had caused harm, and I deeply regret this harm. Moving forward, we are implementing a clear vetting process for speakers and events to ensure consistency and alignment with district values. The process will be structured and transparent, and no one individual, including myself, should bear the sole responsibility for reviewing and approving speakers and partners. This is about creating a shared and accountable system that upholds our commitment to inclusion and integrity. If we cannot come to an agreement on this vetting process, we will not be in the position to invite speakers and partners to work with us moving forward. I do want to say on a personal note, as a Jewish woman, I am deeply sensitive to the realities of antisemitism, and my family has suffered for many, many, many generations because of antisemitism, starting with pogroms in Europe, and I have family members who had died in the Holocaust. I recognize that this is an especially difficult time, both nationally and internationally. Now more than ever, it is essential that we find a constructive path forward and one that fosters understanding, accountability, and unity. And I also ask that we give each other grace in this really very challenging time. I do want to provide some clarity on the recent discussions. The antisemitism training that was brought to my attention when I first became superintendent here really falls under parent purview and falls under the authority of the JPEG community. here really falls under parent purview and falls under the authority of the JPEG community. I fully respect the role in leading this effort. And while I chose not to actively promote the event due to the political stance of the partnering organization, I have also expressed my commitment to supporting the development of a broader parent education experience on combating antisemitism. Similarly, after reviewing concerns about a proposed high school speaker, I decided not to move forward due to past inflammatory social media statements made by that person. As a district, we have a responsibility to ensure that all discussions with students, especially on complex and sensitive issues, foster a culture of learning, respect, and inclusivity. My goal remains to create spaces where all members of our community feel heard, valued, and supported. And again, moving forward, we will have a collaborative vetting process. These are difficult conversations, but they are necessary ones. I remain committed to working with all of you to uphold our shared values and create an environment where all students, families, and staff feel safe, seen, and supported. And again, I want to appreciate people coming to me with their concerns. I am a learner, I am not perfect, and I'm also very, very hopeful that we can come together and create some common understanding around these issues. Again, I want to thank everyone for their partnership in our work to support our students to have the best experience possible in Albany Unified School District.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Are we doing, which order am I going in now? I always feel like we're going to switch up. Let's go with Trustee Inkless for report.
Thank you. So at the high school, the Instructional Improvement Council met last week and approved a new AP class, AP African American Studies. So that will be available for students. And tonight is the deadline for class selection. I hope you guys are done. The reflections, I mentioned this at the last meeting, there was an art contest.
Hey, you should like, I didn't have to do that anymore.
That's right. Sorry. So the reflections art contest, I mentioned that there were five winners at the high school, and one of them, Felipe Toledo, received an award of merit at the state level, and Evelyn Muwinkano, sorry if I'm mispronouncing that, received an award of excellence for literature and is going to represent Albany High at the national level. So that's very exciting. They're going to have an event for her on March 31st. And please consider joining the PTSA. They also, like school board, really need volunteers, so it's a really great way to get involved. Thank you.
Okay, so I, I think this might be a political statement, but I do want to personally reaffirm my commitment to all students, particularly our trans students, given recent anti-trans statements made by our governor. As part of the board and personally as an individual, the responsibility to support all of our students is something that I take very seriously, and especially allowing our students to be active members of our community, whether it's in sports or whatever it might be. So, you know, seeing those statements were really disheartening and unfortunate, given the current political climate, especially at the federal level. But I just want our students to know that we will do everything within our right to protect and support you and your ability to participate in sports, to actively be a part of our community. It's something that I personally take very seriously. So I wanted to start with that, you know, and obviously I'm personally taking actionable steps in my personal life to combat this as well, which I obviously can't share here, but, you know. Secondly, I, there are a number of religious communities within AUSD that are currently celebrating or fasting, including the Muslim community, Christian community, and the Baha'i community. And California passed a law last year which allows students who are fasting for religious reasons to request accommodations for PE. I just want to make sure folks know that this is available. Please reach out to your teachers in writing to let them know that you need PE accommodations if you are fasting for religious reasons right now. And also, Happy Ramadan, Happy Lent, Happy, I don't know how to pronounce it, Alaii, celebration to the Baha'i community as well. Third, the Ocean View PTA Association meeting is this Thursday, March 13th, at 6:30 PM at the library. There will be pizza and childcare provided. We will be discussing our board elections, so if you are interested in stepping up to serve in any of the board positions, please join. We can't have a functioning PTA without a functioning board, so please join us. We also have a call to all fifth graders at Ocean View for the fifth grade class t-shirt contest. You can submit your designs to the front office or to the PTA president by March 28th at the latest. And I've included the email for Julie to add to the report. Next, we have the Swan Eyes hosting an Eid and Holi celebration on April 5th from 1:30 to 3:30 at Ocean View. This event is open to everyone, especially the Holi Run, which will be taking place on the Blacktop. Please bring a change of clothes if you don't want to mess up your clothes. And then there is an immigration Know Your Rights Train the Trainer Workshop that is being done by Gender Justice LA, particularly on how to support TGI immigrants. This is, you learn how to train other people on it, and so if anybody is interested, there's a link to register for that. And then lastly, for Ocean View parents in particular, if you would like to help support or volunteer with school cares, please reach out to Sharon Pipkin, who is currently looking for volunteers to help with school care efforts. And lastly, thank you to Superintendent Stone for your statement. I also want to acknowledge that I was a part of the planning of this event, and at that time, we were unaware of the statements that were brought to our attention after the event had taken place. And so I do want to apologize myself for any harm that was caused to the community. At the time of planning the Know Your Rights, the idea was purely to make sure that folks knew there were options available and how to protect themselves. I learned something new in that training as well. And, you know, we did not know at that time. Thank you for letting us know, and we will do better. But yeah.
Thank you. And then Trustee Davidson, you have a board report?
Just short, I just want to thank all of you for the extra time that tonight took. We have had a very gnarly virus circulating in our house that has now turned into rashes on my kids, and it has been affecting me for a couple of weeks, and that's why I'm not there in person, because we're trying not to pass it around. I just wanted to appreciate all of the work in Albany and our community to continue to support all of our students and all of our learners, and I look forward to bringing you more when I am healthy again.
Thank you. And then Vice President Mahoney?
A few administrative things. I will reiterate the, hey, if you're interested in the Citizens' Bond Oversight Committee, come join. I'm sure the meeting next week will be fantastic, so I'm looking forward to that. Apologies to all of these children that I wasn't able to make it up there in the last couple of weeks, which actually was probably mostly my loss, as I lost the ability to see the joy of those young kids running around. Over at Marin, spring conferences continue for the next few days. Family Math Night is on the 13th. The Marin Talent Show is on the 15th. And then I wanted to provide this group an update on the Marin Popsicle Sale to provide for LA Fire Relief. They raised $2,138.01. Nobody is sure how they got to the 1 cent, but the other, it's still amazing. And the student council is right now figuring out what the appropriate charity is to give the money to. So it's fantastic all around, love it, everything I love about community. This past weekend, I had an opportunity to attend a California School Board Association governance class at the Albany County Office of Education, and I was able to learn about state resources for student achievement, policy, and judicial review. I was able to chat with board members across the county, who are all wrestling with different issues, unique to their district. And despite these differences, we all shared one important thing in common, how to best support and educate our kids. At the end of the session, I chatted with Chris Norwood, a board member from Milpitas and a member of the CSBA faculty, and we talked extensively about the need for leadership in education and how leadership appears in subtle ways. He told me, for instance, when he was the first elected to the board nine years ago, some of his colleagues were from the tech sector, and they all showed up at meetings in suits, effectively changing the norms of the meeting, and from then on, all of the board members wore suits. I bring this up not because, because we all have a role in being leaders for our kids. And by all, I don't just mean the people on the dais or the board. How we show up as teachers, administrators, parents, and community members teaches our children the norms of how we should show up. When we pause, when we take a pause and have rational conversations, they notice. When we make snarky comments or use inflammatory language, they notice. And when we lead with empathy and a desire to understand, they notice. Like it or not, we all lead with our behavior, and given Trustee Norwood's example, maybe even our clothing. And I'd like to encourage all of us to think about the behavioral norms we want for our kids and try to show up as leaders. Thanks.
I agree. Thank you, that's perfect, and we should really finish there, except that I have got one or two things to say. So one is, yeah, Cornell is also on the conference schedule until the end of the week and has its talent show in the Ocean View multipurpose room on the 29th of March. And the 21st of March, so a week on Friday, is Staff Development Day, so no school in the district on that day. And to report on my committee, Trustee Inkless and I are on the Board Policy Committee, and we're meeting approximately twice a month on the Tuesdays when we're not having these board meetings. Last Tuesday, we reviewed and approved 35 policies, so we are going at a good pace because we had a big backlog. Next meeting will be next Tuesday on the 18th, 5 till 7, at the conference room, in the conference room of the district office. So everyone is welcome to join. And that is it from me. And now we will move. Oh, sorry, yes, another thing.
I totally forgot to report out on the DLEC committee. We had a wonderful meeting, and we actually had a full room of parents that came to the presentation that was presented by Cheryl Sinclair. And we were able to sit down and actually talk through, you know, what the tests that our students would be going through would look like, what does it actually mean for, you know, where their progress is, where is the growth? Particularly the fact that once our students test out of DLEC, obviously we're no longer testing them, so that, you know, it's, we often miss that the amount of growth that takes place for particularly our students who are English learners, once they've tested out, because there's, you know, we are no longer testing them in that same category, but there's a lot of great work that our teachers are doing to ensure that our students are meeting English proficiency levels within the classroom, but also when they are tested on their knowledge. So huge shout out to all the teachers and the amazing work that they're doing there.
No, thank you for sharing that. And we will now move on to item 13, which is matters introduced by the board or future agenda items. Does anyone have anything else? I think one thing that I would mention is Prop 28, actually, because Shannon, who's not here now, but she has mentioned it, and it's something that we have talked about agendizing soon.
And I would expand that, I mean, I think a general report on all the measures too, like Measure G, Measure L is probably too early. We're just talking, giving some context about how that money's being used, how much there is, and that sort of thing.
Does anybody else have a future agenda item? That's it? Okay. And nothing from you, Trustee Davidson? Future agenda? No?
No.
Great. So we are?
Still alone.
Still alone, yeah.
All by myself.
So we are adjourning the meeting at 9:40 PM, and thank you, everyone.